You ready?
Yep.
Good evening, welcome to the January 16, 2024 Planning Board. On the agenda tonight, we have two items. The first one is a sign permit for the Law Office of Karen Tobias at 37 West Market Street. You're here for that, right?
I am. Good evening, everybody. Paul Biker, currently signs, here to represent our client. Karen Tobias. I guess there was some question about the height above grade for two of the signs, the hanging signs. And I believe my team did send some additional drawings that you guys received?
Yeah.
There we go, okay. Yeah, the one in question above the sidewalk, it is above the limit of I think I spilled my glasses.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the one on that projects out onto West Market is 89 inches above the sidewalk. And the one on the below the soffit of the porch overhang is 97 inches.
So this replaces the existing
Yeah, that replaces, I think it's the Haggerty, Thomas Haggerty, if I recall correctly. Same exact sizes as previous, just different content. I think there's also some question about the lighting.
Is there lighting?
Yeah, it looks like the go back to that. Yeah, there's pictures on that existing bracket which we're using. Ryan, so there may be some question about that. Is there, is there, it looks like it's existing, if it wasn't a problem before, maybe okay. If there's any concerns, we can address those.
Looks like they're downlit and shielded.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any sense of how big bulbs are in there?
But you're right, I can go take a look today.
Yeah, well.
I'll head over, I mean, what we, you know.
Usually you're like then 40 watts or under
Okay.
for signs. They don't really need a lot of light for a sign, especially something like this, which is probably close.
I agree with you. I would definitely do fairly like a 3,000 or 2,700 Kelvin warm
Yes.
with a 40 watt LED or something like that.
And that's the only one that's lit?
I believe so, yeah, the other one does not appear to have any light.
So here, here we're seeing a mock-up.
Well, yeah.
Just the lighting.
Hmm? Yeah, the bracket hasn't changed.
I think.
We literally, we just put it an overlay, the graphic overlay over that existing photo.
Uh-huh.
That's how it's seen using the same hardware position sizing, et cetera.
Is that the only business in that building?
Mm-hmm.
I think so, yeah, that's, that's it. It's like Samus live up on the second and third floor.
Right, there's three doors, I was just wondering if that other door goes to the first level and there's something in there.
The middle and the right go into the office, the one on the left goes to the upstairs to the residential.
Yeah, I knew there were apartments upstairs, but I didn't know if there was anything in the west side.
When I moved here 40 years ago, it was a restaurant, so they were going in and out.
I remember that.
Yeah, no, they sat on the tables on the front porch and
All right. These two signs seem a little redundant to me because they're parallel, at least the other one was, you know, parallel with the road. So it gave you sort of two viewpoints, whereas this one are sort of side by side and anybody can see the one, you can see the other. But you have the right to put them up if you want, it's within the legal limit.
They're existing, I mean, their main entrance that they use is that one, they don't really use the middle.
Yeah. There's two things about the site that I was gonna bring up. It has nothing to do with your sign permit, but you can pass it along.
Okay.
Because we like to sort of upgrade sites whenever we have a chance.
Of course.
The driveway, which to this parcel is on this side of the building, the sidewalk doesn't go across the driveway. We'd like to see that. So you have continuous driveways and less trip hazards as you go from, in this case, bluestone to asphalt. So you might note that, mention it to your client, and they could mention it to the, to think about that in the long run. And then the second one, which I think is a little more important maybe, is there's no, unless you can tell me different, there's no ADA compliant entrance to this?
That I'm not certain of. It doesn't look like it from the pictures I have access to. When I go over to take a look, you know, I think it's, it's a pre-existing cylinder building.
I understand, it's just that I like to point these things out because we wanna, over time, upgrade existing buildings to allow for wheelchair access.
You know, perhaps at some point in the future, there'll be a construction project, something that could trigger that.
Yeah.
As well as the driveway, I mean, this is just a sign replacement. I'll certainly pass it on to the landlord.
Okay.
While I have the contact information. I think our, our client is only the tenant, so
I imagine.
I will, I will certainly pass that on through Karen and I'll go check out the light.
Yeah, there's, there's only, I think, about 15, 16 inch difference between the porch deck and the, and the ground on the west end. So it's possible to put in a small ramp.
Really?
That could get you up on the porch.
Yeah, the only thing we're just addressing
the rest all and the rest of it, what's happening inside, but it's, it's something to think about for that's the owner to think about for the future, those, those things should be upgraded whenever there's an option.
Yeah. Do you guys typically, when you make your determination on signage, is there a way for the planning board to issue a statement on the village? I mean, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say this to them, but there's really no documentation, it's just gonna, it's gonna go in.
It could be noted at the minutes and we could send you a copy of it.
Right, I think that would help.
Tobias, a copy of the minutes.
Sure.
Or the property owner.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if you guys are, if this is something you'd like to see. I mean, the Village Board could send me something and I, you know, I can include that with the sign permit once we receive it. And it'll just help us pass that on to them, so
All right.
they can understand, you know, what transpired in the meeting. You know, when we go to these, when these meetings, you know, we're representing, we're two people removed from the landlord, so
Yeah, I understand.
we just wanna make sure that they, that information gets passed to them accurately.
Anybody having trouble with this, the sign or anything else you wanna bring up? Let's take a motion to approve the sign as proposed.
Make the motion, Darren.
I'll second Jeff.
Alvin Vander.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Second item on the agenda is Duchess Fairgrounds Inc., three fairgrounds away, site plan approval.
Louis Ruby, I'm representing the Fairgrounds this evening. Our president has succumbed to the local or whatever everybody gets this time of year, and he's down for the council.
Okay.
Our team will present it, Seth, Mark, and Henry, this is the engineering and design team, and we will present it and any questions that you have.
Sorry, one more time, your name, please, Louis?
Lou Ruby.
Lou Ruby, thank you.
He's, he's Ruby.
Ruby, oh, oh. Lou Ruby.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Seth Stickle with Mark Remitzky, P E L S P C. Here tonight with Mark Remitzky, with Henry Thomas from L R C Group, as well as Louis Ruby, a member of the Fair Board. We're here this evening to represent Duchess County Agricultural Society Inc. On behalf of Andy M. Barati, who's unable to be here this evening. Additionally, the project architect, who's also not here tonight, is Day and Stoitsa, Engineering, P C. Together, this project team has prepared and submitted a site plan application for the proposed 4H entrance improvements. The project is located within the Fairgrounds District, which is based on a Asbeld survey in Fairgrounds District map, which was adopted in 2013. The Fairgrounds District establishes its own area and bulk requirements for the overall parcel. And it is a combination of five parcels, as you'll see on this map. That makes up the entire Duchess County Fairgrounds. The project site specifically is located on Parcel 2, which is the main Fairgrounds parcel, as well as a portion of Parcel 3, which is known as the 4H parcel. Together, both of the parcels total approximately 99 acres. The overall parcel has frontage along Route 9, Mulberry Street, Flat Avenue, and North Parsnich. It's important to recognize that the proposed project site is not located within any of the established buffer zones in the district. It's also mostly internal and almost centrally located within the overall parent parcel, the combination of all five. The site is not immediately adjacent to any residential or historic districts. It is fairly well screened. About the only location where you may be able to see this access point is while you're traveling south on Route 9. It is facing a commercial district in the town and is immediately adjacent to open fields which are utilized for parking. The proposed improvements are part of a permitted accessory use, which complies with the area and bulk requirements for the overall parent parcel. And the project is proposing a reconfiguration and redevelopment of the existing ticketing and access point. And that specific access point is located here. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Henry from L R C Group to speak about some of the project details.
Seth said, my name is Henry Thomas, I'm a principal and landscape architect with L R C in Kipsey. And this is not exactly a drawing, it was in a set, this is a colored version of the site plan. But we wanted to do that just to make it a little easier to reach from a distance. Probably the first thing I'd note is, if you've been to the fair before, which is probably a good bet, this entrance is an existing gate into the fairgrounds. It's called locally the 4H gate because it brings you up into the livestock and farm area of the fair. In this case, north is right, the fairgrounds are here. This is just the beginning of the livestock barns that are up on top of Livestock Hill. The perimeter fence of the, sort of the occupied part of the fairground is, is through here. And this becomes beyond this road is all parking field. So if you came in from the north, took a left into the fair during the fair, you would eventually get brought up this drive aisle and the 4H gate would be the gate that you're looking through. So it's, it's a, it's already a place that people know of. It takes roughly or approximately the same amount of traffic as goes through our larger welcome center that's closer to Route 9. That is obviously still the featured entrance, given its visibility. But this one doesn't work as well as the fair would like. So if I started with the existing condition, essentially from this east-west drive, this is the pedestrian route into the 4H gate. And it is a constant slope from bottom to top, mostly in the neighborhood of 5%, but not always exactly. So it's, it's roughly accessible, but if you brought out a level, you'd probably find some spots that might not be 5%. The challenge with that is that the whole ticketing area is also on a slope. It's, it's, it's narrow. The available windows here tend to create a bottleneck. And so at peak points, the lines going into this gate will spill out into where the cars are circulating or that the lines will want to. So there's a capacity problem here that the existing booths, you know, don't fix. So part of our concern or part of our effort here as a redesign was to improve the flow, account for now what is security inspections. So they do a bag inspection before you buy tickets. So that if there's some issue, you're turned away before you've spent your money. Presently, there's nowhere to do that in here very effectively. And so similar to the way they work the main welcome center. The basic idea was to create a smaller version. This is about 22 by 32 in terms of the actual exterior wall. We call it a barn, but it's more garage-ish scale. But it's the same idea as we have down below at the welcome center, which is a pass-through with ticketing on the inside on either side of the pass-through. Ticketing nowadays is happening a couple of different ways, advanced tickets with machines or with people. So in this building, there would be three ticketing stations or purchase stations on either side of the central aisle. There would be one occupied by a live person on each side, so they'll always have that kind of a situation. And then after you pass through the building, you go through the ticket scanning, and now you're into the fairground. Down below, farther down, we have the security checkpoint, which is where they can look at any large bags and those kinds of things, make sure people don't have anything that they aren't supposed to have in the fairground, and then work their way farther up. In the welcome center, it turned out that the security became, the security review became a pinch point in terms of slowing pedestrian traffic down. So this allows for two distinct checking stations to be able to go through. And so what we effectively have is a 5% approach route with multiple lanes, which obviously, when it's lightly trafficked, they don't need to use all these lanes. And that's where they get into their stations and cords. You'd go through security, which is a flat spot. And then we have three ramped sections, one and 12 ramp sections with handrails, that gets you up to a landing at the ticketing barn. And on the face of the ticketing barn, there's a little bit of an overhang on the front side, a larger overhang on the backside, which is where the tickets actually get scanned. So again, this flat spot and this flat spot are what really necessitate us to have ramps in here in order to make this an accessible route in. So traffic passes through that way, the fences now return to the ticketing barn. Similar to what happens at the other welcome center and at this existing gate, there is a break in the chain link fence there with gates, which is the exit route. So the exit route is obviously more straightforward, more filtered out, more metered out. So it doesn't need the width that this does, because right there is where they get the bulk of the queuing happening. It was important to the fairgrounds that this essentially remain in the same place that it is today. There's enough, you know, recognition of this as the 4H gate that we didn't wanna come up with a solution that went all over the side slopes here. Even though that would have been a way to reduce the slope of the walk and make a longer walk, it, it was actually then removing that gate from the identity. So from back here in the parking area, you can recognize that this is the gate in the arrival. Now, one of the things that we're having to deal with in an existing condition in here is that there's a number of large, very old maple trees that are in a state of severe decline. They're kind of maxed out and they're losing parts and pieces on a regular basis. They've really now aged to the point where they're actually a risk concern in terms of things falling out of the trees, parts and pieces of the trees themselves. They are not, they are not destined for being here long. So this proposal suggests or indicates removal of the, a lot of those trees and replacement with six new trees that we specified at an eight-inch caliber. So that's a substantial size to be able to make an instant impact. And to basically replace those trees, which are now, you know, 80, 90 years old that are already there. No way that we can match something that big, but the peage trees are very, very hefty, to say the least. On the other side of the ticketing area, there's a gathering space that's really just a place for patrons to gather themselves together. We've always envisioned that when people arrive at different times, they may very well say, hey, I'll meet you on the inside of the 4H gate. And so there's a little place there with a seat wall and some special paving, just to be a place where somebody can Thank you very much, appreciate the camera work there. Just as, as a place where people can recognize, and you know what happened over at the welcome center, you've got, you know, hillbilly stage there. So conceivably, something might happen here as well in terms of some fair-related activity right at that entrance. This exit walkway is 10 feet wide, so in a pinch, it can be used as a, as a, an emergency access or emergency route for a vehicle. It's not necessarily intended to be one on any kind of a regular basis. This walkway is 32 feet wide, so it's eight lanes at four feet. And again, when we started preparing ideas for this, we were right in the middle of COVID too. So we're all actually kind of evaluating the relationship of people in a queue differently than we ever used to. And so, you know, so we wanted to be sure we were building enough room that that could actually happen to flow. This is a 16-foot wide, which will be more than ample for the people, you know, on their way to the ticketing building. We have details of grading, details of layout. In terms of the materials, actually, let me keep that one back up. So the tan is, this is just a, a single canopy, a permanent canopy. So a pavilion or canopy, whatever you might wanna call it. This tan is the ticketing building. The beige associated with each of those is actually overhanging outside. On either side of that are large roll-up or fold-up garage-type doors that basically will disappear into the ceiling to create a large volume of pass-through space. The material in gray is asphalt, standard asphalt. The material in beige is concrete. Under the canopy and inside the main area of the ticketing barn, we would expect to see stamped and stained concrete. And again, I keep referring to the welcome center, but if you happen to remember walking through there, it's got concrete and stamped and stained, look like wood planks. Actually, a really effective material choice there. So again, hard surface in both of those two areas as well. Grading wise, without getting into extraordinary detail, it's fairly simple in the sense that this, it worked out in order to meet the accessibility requirements, this ends up in a little bit of a fill section compared to the existing path. So naturally, it becomes easy to split the drainage off of that path left and right and direct it in, in, in the majority of cases to the field of grass to the left and right of either of those walkways. We do, however, in areas where there's a need to pick it up, we've got a trench drain here and one here, basically to pick up any water that might attempt to get in the building and then pick up any water that would otherwise be running through the security area. We do have a couple of floor drains in, inside this opening passageway, and that's really just for windblowing water that might get in there to be able to pick that up, so the floor isn't, isn't wet. Generally, the roof drainage, we're handling and going this way to an infiltrator, which I'll let Mark or Seth speak to. We also have another dry well down here at the bottom, just to pick up what was running in this swale without discharging it any farther out. So generally, just a little bit of a fill condition, but that lets us flatten, create these flat spots as well as accommodate the accessibility. This sheet just has the details for the very top and the very bottom. The project extends into, if you've got a milkshake, that happens over here, this is the first barn. So we actually get into the fairgrounds and a little bit over the crest of that hill, just to make sure that we provided that 5% to the point where it releases into other accessible terrain. I mentioned landscape already. In terms of lighting, we do have proposed lighting. And again, I, you probably won't be able to read this from your distance, but the fixture that we're proposing is basically the same style that we used at the welcome center. So it's this bishop's crook domed, kind of a barn light, a modern barn light, if you will. In this case, we're using one pole with two heads on it. We've modeled that photometrically. We're using 3,000 K color temperature. Generally, we've got a really nice degree of coverage and continuity from bottom to top. And again, we're not chasing this everywhere, we're not chasing it out into the parking field. But we do get light down onto that intersection where cars still come by. And again, these are on, I think I make sure I speak correctly in terms of the mounting height. I think it was 12 foot poles, let me just see, I'm sorry. Well, I'll defer to that if somebody asks.
Are these, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt, but are these figures on the right, are those foot elevations?
They are, but they're not necessarily this, what we're using. That, that, the graphic on the far right was really just to show what the bottom of the fixture looks like.
Okay, which is four feet roughly?
Yes, just for the base cover, but the pole itself.
It's the note right under there, Henry.
Oh, 12.5, okay. So the lens of the light, so if you looked at the flat, the flat lens, not, not that one, the other one. Okay, that, that line right there is 12 and a half feet above grade, which is comparable to what we did at the welcome center. So obviously, the top of the pole is taller than that intersection. But no trespass, of course, going off the property, this is substantial inside and side. In terms of the ticket building, again, I mentioned that you, this is the entrance side. And so what you see on the elevation, which I'll turn to next, are a couple of faux mandors on this side, which are just to make the elevation look more typical barn-like, if you will. And then we have in one corner, ticketing, and then diagonally opposite, we have ticketing. And that was just so those, if there's, happens to be a line end up there, they don't back into each other, but they're offset. Like so, there is one restroom, so we do have a new septic service as part of the project. And then there's a utility room, which is just electricity and, and technology, et cetera. There wouldn't be electricity down to the pavilion, the security pavilion, just for purposes of light. There's probably a sommet lights in there. There's probably some lights in there where you secure the equipment. So this would be the arrival elevation for the entrance side, so this door would normally be open in an event. And then this is, represents the shed that comes out on the front side. This is the shed on the back side, so a very similar elevation. This is on the inside of the fair, and that is a working man door, so that you can get into the building without opening the large door. Material-wise, it is hardy plank or hardy board siding in a red, like the Welcome Center with white trim. The roof material would be galvano standing seam, so it will have that galvanized look the same again as the Welcome Center. The side elevations, that gives you an idea of the overhangs on either end and the windows going into the ticketing areas and the other rooms inside. The security pavilion, the arrival elevation would be such so that this gable is centered on the building beyond. This is the side view, so really, you just have a little bit of siding at the gable end, and then you'll have the standing metal seam roof on either side. So fairly simple stuff, architecturally speaking, but hopefully in keeping with the same kind of agricultural flavor with the other structures on site. And I think that's all I need to put forward. Happy to answer any questions you have on later, of course.
Lighting, those are full cutoff fixtures?
Correct.
They look like it, I just wanted to confirm. As we're more concerned about light sky than neighbors at this point.
Just had a question about the exit. There's a split rail fence on both sides of that exit roadway, and one of them seems to be a little bit off from the caddem, and one's right on the side of the caddem.
Talking about the spences?
Yeah, that one that you just touched, and then just a little bit further down on the plan.
Yeah, they are simply because they're, well, we...
I was actually more asking about that.
Oh, this.
And that, and is there any concern about people getting, sort of like, massive people getting caught in there? Is there any kind of public assembly regulation that restricts, you know, funneling people into something that looks like twelve feet wide?
Yeah, it's a ten-foot wide path. Typically, the exiting traffic is so metered out that it doesn't bunch up in a safe way.
I was just thinking, in the event that say there was a fire or panic or something, and people, like, I don't know if there's a rule against that, I just wanted to ask the question.
It's a question, we've never had to do a capacity analysis of that kind of a path. I'd have to investigate to see what, if any, kind of a code. That's not far off from what we did do in the other one. It's longer, because that one is flatter.
And these are about four-foot tall fences or something along those lines?
Yeah, they're just, this is just to keep people from bumping into any kind of car traffic and keep cars from bumping this. So yes, that's the reason for that rail was just to keep cars and people separate. But yes, it'd just be a three-rail fence, very simple.
I mean, I don't know that's anything we regulate, but it just might be something to understand.
That's a good question, yeah.
And just one more question on that. Did you say that the, that bottom exit walkway, which has the split-rail fence here in the bottom, and an aluminum picket fence above? It says aluminum ornamental picket fence?
Yes, we do have that detail on the drawing. So the fencing, the fencing here is to keep anyone from bypassing the security check.
Yes.
But we wanted it to look more handsome than the chain link, but we need, but we needed more height than a split rail would give us security-wise.
And so this, right here, it says exit only, there's a gate.
Right.
And what did you say was the width of this? What's the clearance for emergency vehicles?
It's ten feet clear, but it's not designed as an emergency path. I probably shouldn't have mentioned that. It's, I'm just saying that it would be drivable, but it is not, it's not part of an egress plan or anything like that. It's substantially approved on the existing condition, but it's not designed to be that. I'm just saying in a pinch, it could.
And these ramps here connecting the security check-in with the ticketing barn, are, what's the slope of these ramps?
Those are one in twelve, so there's...
An inch per foot?
Correct. So there's three ramp sections separated by a landing.
I see.
Each of them.
Which is required for, that's the maximum.
And then at the bottom and the top, it's also flat, two percent or less. So that those are compliant ramps with the required rail.
Very good.
System, right.
I have a question about the trees.
Yes.
Current trees are taken out, as far as I can tell, ten trees and a few stumps.
Yeah, some of them are already...
And you replace them with six. And the current trees are about, from the scale, about forty feet apart, and these are about ninety feet apart. So I'm wondering, maybe other people could weigh in, my feeling is maybe ten trees would work better spaced forty feet, forty-five feet apart rather than, and maybe smaller halber, so that you got that sort of LA feel that you have now. Whereas, you know, when they're ninety feet apart, they sort of fall apart a little bit in terms of that linear arrangement.
Right. Yeah, I will say, and again, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I do know the cost of each of these is very significant. So Andy was kind of interested in the scale first and foremost. Clearly, you could turn those into ten smaller trees and do, as you said, fill in these two gaps.
Right. That would be my suggestion, because in the long run, you're going to end up with a better product. Yes, there'll be a little less, you know, so ten six-inch trees versus, you know, six, eight-inch trees, and it would probably save you money initially, and in the long run, we'd get a, something similar to what it is right now, which is probably the only distinctive part of that entrance is those trees.
Right, right.
So John, the six you're talking about are the three on both sides of the entry and these two?
Those are existing to remain.
Okay.
Those two at the top.
So which of the ones that are ninety feet, you're suggesting be closer together and more of them there?
Yeah, so those are about ninety feet apart, I put a scale on them, but from the screen, I scale it out, and they're about ninety feet apart. So if you put four more trees in between those, you'd get ten trees, and you would get them about forty-five feet apart, which would be somewhat similar to the existing condition.
As long as Andy hasn't bought these six trees.
Because eight-inch trees are really, you know, you need something pretty substantial to plant those.
Oh, yeah.
Whereas a six-inch tree, you could probably haul there in a pickup.
Yeah, this is, this is the big deal. I'm not, I'm not sure if I can...
No, I'm just throwing it out there.
But I appreciate that, and I think that gives us some flexibility. Yeah, yeah. And alternatively, there could be a scenario where you do four of a different, you know, flower entries or something like that.
Or different color of maple, or something similar in scale, and height, but gives you a little variation.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, John.
So, good evening, Mark Ravinsky here to speak about civil engineering on the project. Fairly straightforward. So Henry discussed some stormwater management on the property, and so really, two components to civil engineering, both stormwater management. And also, in this case, application is necessary to Dutch County Department of Health for water supply and onsite sewage disposal. The ticket booth that is being proposed as part of this application is able to accommodate ten employees, and so, and then Henry mentioned that there's also a bathroom that's located in that structure. So we met with the Dutch County Department of Health, did some onsite field investigation, and had designed a small onsite septic system for that, for this particular building. It's located on the east side of the entrance for the entire ticketing. And water supply would be just an extension of the central water system, the Village of Rybeck water system that is currently serving the fairgrounds. There's actually a section of water service right here that would provide water service to the ticket booth. Fairly straightforward, and that application is completely ready to be made to the Dutch County Department of Health. Secondly, with regard to stormwater management, you can see through the detail that Henry has provided, would be a specific restructuring with the entrance for security and also the ticket booth. It's fairly straightforward, utilizing infiltration practices actually throughout the entire project, either for a direct collection and discharge into a seepage pit or some type of infiltration basin, or utilization of swales that ultimately would, there'd be some infiltration associated with that. It's our field testing in this entire area, found the soils to be well-drained and very suitable for both, as I said, for the sanitary and also the stormwater management. And with regards, you know, with regard to stormwater management, I also note that this project, the total site disturbance is less than one acre. So in considering permitting on this project, so obviously, this board is a permitting agency. I've mentioned Dutch County Department of Health, also permitting agency, but in this case, since overall site disturbance is less than one acre, no DEC permitting is required for an alarm on the project. However, the, this project will proceed with erosion sediment control management throughout, you know, for the construction of the project. That's simply it for civil engineering. Any questions?
Just one question regarding stormwater. Is there ever any consideration given to collection of it in any way, just to be used to, you know, for dust control or even irrigating the parking area or to spray in the parking area when it's drought condition or anything like that? Just given the amount of flat impervious surface you have, and it looked like some of the stormwater was actually going to a seepage pit, if I saw it correctly on the prior plan. Could that ever be utilized by the fairgrounds in any way?
I think it would be difficult to utilize, just, you know, just considering the geography, you know, to utilize it, you'd have to pump and probably, you know, put it in some type of vehicle or something like that. So I think since it's such a small area and, you know, just, you know, utilizing, actually, it's very minimal stormwater that's associated with it. So I think this is the most effective way to handle it.
Just, yeah, let it run home.
The septic, so you're saying... Of course, there'll only be ten employees working in that building. You're allowing fifteen gallons per day to employ, a hundred and fifty gallons per day for the system. So you're proposing, and this is new, it's a new septic here.
That's correct.
And the dash door, the, was basically a hundred percent backup could be used in the future. So you said, the, did you say the county, the Dutch County Department of Health doesn't need to...
No, they do. It does require Dutch County Department of Health approval.
Okay, and so has the permitting been advanced?
Yes, it, well, the health departments have been out with this, we have design plans. Wanted to have our first presentation with this board prior. We're ready to submit to the health department for review. I also note, because of the location of the absorption field, it has been designed in such a way to accommodate traffic, because Andy has indicated that there's parking, there'll be some parking, and, you know, sometimes there's parking in this area. So it's, it's been designed to accommodate vehicle traffic.
And just a little, just curious, what is this? Is this an infiltrator over here?
That is.
That runoff?
That's a seepage pit. So you can see it's connected, there's, you know, there's, as Henry mentioned, there's a series of drains that are, you know, picking up runoff from, you know, various portions of this accessway. And so in this case, the simplest ways just to handle it, and once again, because of the permeable soils in the area, it's just going to be collected and gone through infiltration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Just one cosmetic question. You mentioned that the siding would be hardy clabber, red with white trim to match the existing structures. That hardy clabber, is it the smooth side? Can it be the smooth side?
I don't know enough about it to answer that question. Do you mean the individual board rough textured versus smooth?
Yes, yeah. In a historic district, we require a smooth because they...
It could be smooth.
A textured one looks like vinyl siding, it doesn't look like real wood.
Okay.
So we prefer, but this isn't in the historic district, so we don't have any control of that. But we would suggest that you think about it in terms of smooth hardy rather than the fake grain hardy.
Thank you.
Well, this is in the center of the parcel, in terms of impacts on the village is going to be pretty minimal. And glad to see the fairgrounds upgrading its facilities and making the entrance smoother and ADX accessible, that's all good things. I think we have a couple procedural things we have to do, because I think this parcel butts up against Route Nine and has to be referred to the county for their review. And they usually get thirty days, they sometimes will give it to us faster than that. And we also, I think, have to declare lead agency.
Declare lead agency tonight, and if the board is comfortable enough, you guys can also vote a negative declaration secret.
I think we'll wait on that.
You'll wait on that?
Till the lead agencies join in. I don't think there will be any, but, so we would circulate the lead agency and wait on the neg deck until that comes in. I don't think there'll be any issue, but that'll delay it at least theoretically thirty days, so that we can get the lead agency back and the, and the county has their thirty-day comment period. Is that okay, if we put this off for a month and get those procedural things taken care of?
So just a question, so you're considering this, I'm assuming this, so is this an unlisted action with a coordinated review? Once again, so the only involved agency, right, would be Dutch County Department of Health.
Right.
Dutch County planning is really, it has no approval.
No, no, they're just interested.
Just interested, right? And no New York State DEC. So health departments are already involved, I'm wondering whether it can be an unlisted, uncoordinated review? And that way, you don't have to circulate for lead agency.
Yeah, is there anybody, the only people I would think about circulating to is the town. It doesn't change the access in terms of DOT or anything like that, but the town is an adjacent, now, I don't think they're going to be interested in taking our lead agency, but...
Yeah, there's, there's no access changes. Once again, as Seth pointed out in the initial discussion of the project, it is really buffered from any residential districts and granted a parcel to...
Yeah, where's the town money? Yeah, where's the town line?
So I was involved in the, in the original structuring of the fairgrounds district. So parcel two is, so here's the town-village boundary, right? Well, once, when we, I just did one in Red Hook with town, village and multiple parcels. So here's, here's the town-village boundary, here's, here's parcel two, that goes around like this, right? And so there's a small piece, there's a small piece of the town right here, here's the village, here's the village, very small, but doesn't affect, that's why we highlighted this area here. And then here's parcel three, right here. And so we also, and so this was also adopted as part of the zoning, as part of the zoning for the Village of Rhinebeck when we did the fairgrounds district. And we noted all the coverages and setbacks, et cetera. And we need all that, that information, you know, all those requirements.
But is borders, parcel border's on Route 9, so it has to go to the county?
Yes.
Do you agree on that?
Yes, I do. It's on, it's on town or county or state highway.
Yeah.
Yes.
And it is relatively close to the town boundary. So I would think as a courtesy, we could circulate to the town to see if they want to be lead agency. I'm sure they'll say no. But if we're going to take 30 days for the county, we might as well do the lead agency circulation too, so that if the town has any comments about the fairgrounds that they want to throw in, they have the ability to do so.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
It's reasonable.
Do a resolution to circulate the lead agency?
On motion, Jeff.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll circulate to the county and is a month from now acceptable? Are you in a big rush on this?
I think we'd like to move it along, I guess.
I'm pretty confident we'll hear back by February 6.
Okay.
Yes. And I don't, you know, does anybody think that we need a public hearing on this?
Doesn't seem like it. I think the only thing, the condition that seems like it's going to be attached to this is the septic approval prior to anything being built, which would be obvious anyway.
Right. But we usually do, the way it works, we usually, you know, approve something on the condition they get Department of Health approval. They don't want to approve anything until it's already gone through the site plan process.
Couldn't get a building permit anyway.
Yeah.
Typical with that condition.
And I think they're the only people who are going to be interested in this, other than everybody's going to say this is a good idea.
Great.
I agree.
Okay.
So we'll see you in one month.
Very good.
And in theory, unless we, something comes up, you can consider the treaty thing and any other comments that we made and we will see you in a month. And I don't see any reason why we couldn't vote on that one. And I don't think we need a public hearing unless somebody else thinks different. Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Right.
Thank you.
Very thorough presentation. Thank you.
I appreciate your depth screen work there. I thought it was a magic behind it.
All right. Is there any other items of discussion we have?
Yes, so I believe Jeff circulated over the weekend. The additional edits for the December 19th, 2023, I hope everybody has had a chance to look them over. If everybody's okay, you guys do have the ability to approve those as amendments.
Now look at the, everybody else okay?
Yeah, the only thing that I put in there sort of emphasized my frustration with the applicant, and I didn't know if that was an appropriate statement to put in the.
I don't remember anything.
It was, it was. The condition is very extension to plant the trees. So it's true, it's factual, it was its own meeting, but I put the motion in there of frustration with the applicant.
I didn't see any problem with that. The blue, the blue are the comments from Darras. And I had to do myself.
Does anybody have any trouble with the amendments suggested? Grab a motion to approve a amendment?
I'll motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, moving right along. As you probably all know, this year, the Village of Rhinebeck has an election. Two trustee seats entered up. And that election falls on the third Tuesday in March. So that would also, in theory, be a meeting night, or a second meeting night in March. So technically, you guys don't have to vote tonight, but it is out there to amend the meeting schedule for 2024 for the month of March to cancel that meeting. I believe it's March 19.
March 19.
Is this room going to be used?
Yes, this is where the election will take, will take place.
So we would either have to move it or cancel it?
Correct.
I assume we don't want to move it to a different room, so it'll be a different date. Does anybody have any feelings about this?
Maybe as we get closer, start to see if things are in the pipeline before we.
So you're suggesting maybe one meeting in March if there's not a lot on the agenda?
Yeah. So let's defer this decision until February. But keep it in mind, you know, our meetings haven't been overwhelming lately.
It's amazing this year.
So we can assume that, you know, unless things are looking like they might get backed up, we can always defer it to the fourth Tuesday of the month. But then it's really back up against the next, the next month's meeting. So, you know, I think all things being equal, unless we're really crunched, I would say we'd probably cancel that meeting. But we won't do it until February, just to see how things are going.
Have you ever jumped nights to just move it to a Wednesday night or something?
As long as there's no interference with any other community board or any other board that's using this room on that night. Usually the biggest things with Wednesdays is you run into court.
Yeah. They are scheduled, so everybody's starting out their, their date. Ours is Tuesday.
Good stuff.
So it's not, I've tried to schedule this room, but it only seems to be pumped. But, but it is, it is possible. I, every so often you get lucky and you can come in and, and we'll, we'll know that by February.
The other hitch to remember with the fourth Tuesday is the village board has added, the trustee board has added a special meeting of the month, and I believe it is that fourth Tuesday.
It's, it's in the afternoon though, so prepare.
All right.
All right, so.
So we'll take a look at the calendar and the schedule in, by the second week of February and make a decision. Any holdover or discussion or new items of interest? I know, I don't know if Lydia wants to share, but about the house at 47, the carriage house at 47.
Oh, 46.
46 Livingston.
Yeah, I mean, they're my neighbors. I ran in, I ran into them and they found a different contractor who's working to stabilize the slate roof.
Stabilize the slate roof?
Yes.
Repair it.
Yeah, in other words, keep the slate roof.
Yes, keep the slate roof, keep the tin, flat roof, keep, keep it, and yeah.
Well, that's great news. That's a, that's an important historic asset, the carriage house.
Yes. We, we had a nice conversation. And yeah.
Good to have thoughtful, considerate neighbors.
Yeah, they're, they actually are, they're, they're young. Oh my God, that makes me feel really old when I see that. They're this lovely, they're a lovely couple, and they're very excited about the historicness of the home. It was just, they just bought the house and then plowing an additional X dollars into the garage to keep the garage frankly insurable was of concern for them, hence the asphalt conversation. But they interviewed a bunch of different contractors and they found one that works, who is willing to keep the slate roof in a way that worked for them.
That's great news.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's exciting. They'll probably be in front of you five, 10 years maybe with a plan of the carriage house.
Good luck with that, I know I'm not going to be.
Anything else?
Just one thing, I hate to be the Grinch, but the Cheese Louise store in town has a neon sign in the window, which I don't find offensive, but in this past year, we've, we've told two of the businesses in town that they had to remove neon signs in their window. And to maintain some equity, I think, I think.
Cheese Louise.
Cheese Louise.
Where's?
It's right next to Kroger in the parking lot.
Two meat stores.
Oh.
It became.
It's not a large stuff, it's a neon, it's a white neon sign that says Cheese Louise in the window.
So they at the very least have to back it off from the window.
Yeah, that's what the others did. Remember there was a gelato sign at Pizza, and they took that out after they were notified and put it on the wall. And the, there was an open lid sign at Tea Fresh, and when they were informed, they moved that back. So just, just to be fair, I think we should let them know. That's it, I have nothing else. The Grinch has spoken.
I'm still upset about the department store, and I hate to see that just drag out for, I don't know how many months it has been now. But somehow we should be able to figure out who is responsible for that and that and get it fixed. And I'm going to, I guess, bring it up every meeting until it gets done.
Good.
Because that really bothers me.
It is an eyesore.
Anything else? We can have early night, 8 o'clock on the button.
Motion to adjourn, Jeff.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.